Good morning, everyone. I am calling to order our specially called meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden and I am the Chair of this committee. And I am joined today by Councilmembers Canno, Bender, Andrew Johnson, Yang, Quincy, Worsami, Frye, and Paul Masano. And we are a quorum of this committee and able to do business. We have one item on our discussion agenda for today. This is a report back from our staff in response to the report that was submitted by the Workplace Partnership Group. And we had asked for a staff report on the recommendations submitted by the Workplace Regulations Partnership Group for municipal-earned sick leave policy, including asking for a draft ordinance of a municipal-earned sick leave policy for council consideration, proposed program to administer the municipal-earned sick leave policy, and responses to mitigate, minimize, or resolve outstanding issues and concerns, including but not limited to issues identified in the Workplace Partnership Group report regarding casual employees and others with unique employment arrangements, issues articulated in the Kramer dissenting opinion, and those issues collected through community listening sessions related to a proposed municipal-earned sick leave policy. And finally, that we would also set a public hearing to receive comments on a proposed municipal-earned sick leave policy ordinance. I want to just start by saying this is, in truth, an idea that was initiated by community members, that the city would consider an earned sick leave policy that would apply within the boundaries of the city of Minneapolis. We have heard over the past many months from hundreds and possibly thousands of workers and businesses and engaged stakeholders who wanted to let us know their thoughts and opinions. The mayor first talked about this proposal in her State of the City address last year at approximately this time. And I really want to especially thank the Workplace Partnership Group for the work that they did under what I believe was difficult and challenging circumstances to take tremendous input, facilitate even more input, to make sure that they heard as many perspectives as possible, and then have debate and deliberation over a course of many meetings to arrive at what was a compromise on many provisions that they then suggested in a recommendation report to us. And I know that we're joined here today by the Chair of that group, Liz Doyle, the Vice Chair, Jim Roheder, and I know I see many, if not most, or almost all of the members of the Workplace Partnership Group who are here with us today, along with other stakeholders who are very interested. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for that. So with that brief introduction, just another little outline, I think there's been a little bit of confusion about what all would happen today. So again, this is a meeting where we will hear for the first time from our staff. We have just posted yesterday evening draft ordinance, so this is all new to us and to the public to review that ordinance, and our staff will help us do this. And then we will be setting a meeting for public comment. So this is not a meeting today for public comment, but we will be setting a special meeting for public comment, and also a special meeting to actually vote on and consider the draft ordinance. So just to make sure that that is clear, since we have so many who have joined us today. And I'm going to ask Nuria Rivera Van der Maide, she is our Deputy City Coordinator. She will give us an overview and help lead us through the staff who will be the primary presenters. So thank you very much.
Good morning, Chair Glidden. Members of the committee, thank you for having us here. My name is Nuria Rivera Van der Maide. I am the Deputy City Coordinator for the City of Minneapolis. And as Chair Glidden mentioned today, we will be giving an overview of staff recommendations. And we will be doing so by following the staff direction and starting off with walkthrough through the ordinance. I am joined today by two very, very talented people who deserve a lot of credit as this was drafted. Susan Trammell from our City Attorney's Office will walk you through the draft ordinance as recommended, and Brian Wash from the Department of Civil Rights. And you will hear in the presentation that that is our recommendation for the department who should administer this policy. And should you have any questions for him, he is more than capable of answering those questions. So I thank them both for being here. We have an extensive PowerPoint presentation to walk through, although I suspect that the majority of the questions are going to be answered in the course of the discussion of the draft ordinance. So without further ado, I leave you with Susan Trammell.
Good morning, Chair Glidden. Members of the Committee of the Whole. I'm going to walk you through the proposed draft accrued sick leave policy. I'm going to start with the scope of the ordinance. The first topic is the covered employers. So you will be a covered employer under this ordinance if you employ six or more employees. Therefore, this ordinance will also apply to the city. The ordinance, however, does exclude the U.S. government, Minnesota State Departments and its agencies and bureaus, and any other local government. Now, covered employees, that will be anyone who works 80 hours of work in the calendar year within the city's geographic boundaries for that employer. So if you work 60 hours for employer A during the year and 20 hours for employer B, and that's all you worked during the year, then you're still not covered, even though you've worked 80 hours within the geographic boundaries. Now, it includes all full-time, temporary, and part-time employees. They're all covered. There are some exclusions. If you are an independent contractor, you are by definition not an employee, so you're not covered. Construction workers who are paid prevailing wage rate for all hours worked on both private and public projects are excluded. The definition of prevailing wage rate is governed by Minnesota statutes, and it's included and referenced in the ordinance. Also excluded are construction worker apprentices, also defined in Minnesota statutes. And then healthcare providers who are casual employees are excluded. Now, it's important to note that a public health provider has its own definition in the ordinance. And that definition is a person licensed in good standing in Minnesota to provide medical emergency services and employed in that capacity at an hourly rate of at least four times the federal minimum wage. And so that limits who is a healthcare provider. And then a casual employee also has its own definition, and it includes an employee who fills in when a regularly scheduled employee is unable to complete a work shift or supplement regular staffing due to an increased business need. Now, a casual employee is not obligated to accept a shift. When they decline a shift, they still remain on the casual list, allowing them to call in for future work shifts on the same terms and conditions as casual employees who accept a shift. So they are the ones who determine whether and when they want to work. And those are the only exclusions that we have in this ordinance for employees. Now, this particular ordinance is a minimum standard. So an employer can have more hours accrued than we list, they can allow more carryover than we list. So in fact, the ordinance encourages the adoption and retention of more generous sick leave that's paid to the employee than is provided in this particular ordinance. And if an employer provides more, they can continue to provide more. They don't have to just provide what we have stated is the minimum in this ordinance. In addition, we aren't discouraging other policies related to leave. In fact, we are encouraging them. And in fact, employers may have a policy by which an employee can donate leave to another person in an emergency situation type donation policy. And an employer may, for an employee who hasn't accrued sufficient sick leave to take care of themselves or their family's medical needs, or safe time leave, they may advance that to an employee and not be in violation of this ordinance.
As you're turning to the new slide, I just, I got a reminder from the clerk that I should let folks know that if you would like to sit down, because we are running out of seats in here, the room across the hall, 319, does have seats, and this is live streamed in there. So I know you may want to be in this room, but if you would like to sit down at some point, that room is open and available.
Thank you, Chair Glidden. So the accrual of the sick and safe leave is at the rate of one hour for every 30 hours worked. That is a Workplace Partnership Group recommendation. It includes the carryover of up to 80 hours to the next year, also a Workplace Partnership recommendation. Maximum accrual, 48 hours in a calendar year, again, a Workplace Partnership recommendation. And an employee may use their accrued sick and safe time after 90 calendar days of employment. Again, one of the recommendations from the work group. What may an employee use their accrued sick and safe time for? They can use it for themselves, they can use it for their family members, which is very broad, and that's taken from our civil service rule, which is what the city uses for defining a family member, and is also a Workplace Partnership recommendation. They may use it for mental or physical illness, injury, or health condition, to get a medical diagnosis, care or treatment of that diagnosis, or some other injury or health condition. Can use it for preventive healthcare. So they may use it for their child's annual checkup. If they need to have that appointment during work time, they can use their sick time to attend that appointment. They may also use it if they need to be absent from work because of a domestic violence, sexual assault, or stalking situation. And that includes seeking medical attention, obtaining services from victim services organizations, obtaining psychological or other counseling, seeking relocation, taking legal action, attending court, those types of situations. And then because public health is one of the reasons that the city is moving forward with this, is that should the employee's place of business close due to an order by a public official that there's exposure at that workplace to an infectious agent, a biological toxin, or other hazardous material, and therefore is a public health emergency, they could use their sick time because of that closure. And that also extends then to the closure of their child's place of school, where the child attends daycare or school, if the school or the daycare closes for the same reasons and the employee needs to be absent from work to take care of the child. Now, an employee may use their accrued sick and safe time in the smallest increment of time that is tracked by the employer's payroll system. So if the employer is paying a person in increments of 15 minutes, that's how they track time, then the employee would be allowed to take 15 minutes of paid sick and safe time. So it's the smallest increment used by the employer's payroll system. The employee must be compensated at the same hourly rate with the same benefits that the employee would have received if the employee had worked those hours. And an employer may not condition the use of the safe and sick time on finding a replacement worker to work that employee's shift. Now, that does not preclude an employer for having a policy in place that would allow employees to voluntarily exchange hours or trade shifts. And so if they have a policy in place and the employee wishes to do that instead of using their accrued sick and safe, they can do that. And that would not be a violation to have such a policy. Now, once an employee has used three consecutive sick and safe days, the employer may ask for reasonable documentation to support that the use by the employee satisfies those conditions of what I said you can use sick and safe time for without being in violation of this ordinance. The other duties of the employer include posting the notice. There will be notices about what employees' rights are under this ordinance, and those notices will be prepared by the Minneapolis Department of Civil Rights, and they will be available in languages spoken by the workers of the city. And the employer must post those notices in the languages that are spoken by at least 5% of their employees. If they have an employee handbook, they must include it in their handbook, and they must give the notice to new employees. The employer must also track the hours of employees who occasionally work in the city. And the rules that I'll talk about later will address those ways to track and how that must be done and recorded and kept. We are requiring that the employer records that are required under this ordinance be maintained for three years. That is consistent with the Minnesota Fair Labor Standards Act section of Minnesota statutes dealing with record retention. They also keep the requirement for three years. And employees are allowed, under this ordinance, to inspect their own records related to the accrual and use of sick time. Now, because the Civil Rights Department will be the department that's tasked with implementing and enforcing this ordinance, the employer must also provide access to these records. And failure to do that would be a violation of this ordinance. Because there will be times where an employer may request reasonable documentation of an employee's absence, there's a requirement in this code that the employer keep that So once an employee has accrued time and has remained healthy, there may be situations arising where the employee then, employment with that employer terminates. There will be no payout of accrued sick and safe time upon termination. However, if an employee is then rehired by that same employer within 26 weeks of the termination date, the accrued sick and safe time that had previously accumulated must be reinstated. And that 26 weeks comes from the Affordable Care Act. That 26 weeks is what is used in the Affordable Care Act to determine whether or not an employee may be considered a new hire for purposes of continuing healthcare benefits. So we're carrying that over. It's the same standard use elsewhere. The accrued sick and safe time remains on an employer's books for three years. Remember, we've said that an employer must keep records for three years. So those hours remain on the books for three years if the employer has locations outside of the city and they transfer an employee from the city to outside the city. Should that employee return during the three-year time period, then that employee would get that accrued and unused balance back. And then employees who remain employed, once a business owner or employer sells or otherwise transfers their business, but the employees remain on the payroll, they keep their accrued but unused sick leave with this new employer. Now, in the ordinance, the Department of Civil Rights is named as the department to implement, administer, and enforce this ordinance. One of the things that they will have to do immediately will be to begin creating some rules for the operation of this ordinance. They will also have the authority to investigate possible violations. Under the ordinance, they may do so on the basis of a report, where someone actually reports to them a violation, and the reporter need not be the employee. And then they may also do so on the basis of any other credible information. So if they were checking out a report of a violation, and they then learn things that lead them to believe that there are more than the one violation they are investigating, they would have reason to expand the investigation and determine if there were, yes, other violations. And then they are given the authority to order appropriate relief for the violations. Now, regarding implementation of the ordinance, it's a phased-type situation. The effective date is proposed for July 1, 2017, which, in discussions with the Department of Civil Rights, they think that that would give them sufficient time to create the rules for the implementation and administration. Regarding enforcement, during that first year after the effective date, so through July 1 of 2018, an alleged violation of the code for a first violation for an employer would not result in penalties. But if there were subsequent violations, then penalties could be imposed by the department. Now, one of the tasks of the department is to create multilingual and culturally specific outreach and community engagement documents for both employers and employees, so that everyone understands their rights and obligations under the ordinance. They are also to create guidelines and frequently asked questions to accompany the rules that they create. It also directs the department to explore some work sharing arrangements and agreements with the state of Minnesota, and to create multilingual notices for the employer use, which I mentioned before, that they're required to post and provide to employees upon hire and in their handbooks. And as I mentioned in the previous slide about their ability to enforce in the phased enforcement, the first 12 months, they're going to be mediating disputes and issuing warnings and notices to correct. But under the second violation within the first 12 months, and then any violation after the first 12 months, there is an administrative process included in this ordinance with the right of an appeal to a city hearing officer. So as I indicated previously, they have this investigative authority and the right to act upon suspected violations. One of the conditions of this suspected violation must be that it must be reported or learned by the department within 365 days of the occurrence. That's similar to our civil rights ordinance timeline for filing. Now, there's a rebuttable presumption included in this ordinance. If an employer fails to respond to a notice of violation or the department's request for information, then there's a rebuttable presumption that the violation did occur. The ordinance does not lay out the specific process that the department will use. That will be set out in the rules that they are to set forth. But it does require that the rules address both timeliness and the processes, including that they must consider the statement of position by the employer or any other person who has evidence related to the alleged violation, they must consider those, they must be objective and impartial, and that they may require that the employer and others participate in a fact-finding conference or other participatory-type situation where they meet and confer to define the issues, resolve resolvable issues, determine undisputed elements, and discuss or negotiate a settlement. And then if they are unable to settle, the Director of Civil Rights would issue a determination of violation. The relief that could be ordered is included in the ordinance, and it includes both reinstatement and back pay, crediting of accrued but not credited time, plus payment to the employee of two times the dollar value of that time, but not exceeding $250 per violation, payment of accrued time that was accrued but unlawfully withheld to an employee who wanted to use their accrued sick and safe time, and then again, two times that dollar value not to exceed $250, up to a $1,500 administrative penalty payable to the employee for retaliation or confidentiality violations, and then up to a $50 a day, per day administrative fine payable to the city for violations of those employer duties, such as notice posting, required statements to employees, and record keeping. And it specifically states in the ordinance that if there are any of those fines issued, they would go to defray the cost of administering and enforcing the ordinance. Now, if the department director issues a determination of violation, finding that there has been a violation, the employer will have 15 days to appeal. The appeal will be a hearing that is held before one of the city's administrative hearing officers. The burden of proof is a preponderance of the evidence, and also the hearing officer will be required to determine whether or not the required corrective action issued by the director is a reasonable corrective action. The hearing officer's decision is a final decision. At that point in time, the employer may petition by writ of certiorari to the Minnesota Court of Appeals. And then there's a clause in the ordinance as well, that if necessary, the city attorney may initiate civil action if the employer does not comply with the final determination of violation. And with that, I have walked you through the top points of this ordinance, and I could take questions now or at the end of the presentation.
I see a couple in queue here, Council President Johnson and then Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair. Ms. Trammell, one of the things that I, all through this whole thing, if an employer provides what's called paid time off, where in our ordinance does it address that issue? And I did the other thing, was the trading thing, and I saw that you highlighted that, but I'm interested in making sure that people understand if we have paid time off. It's not an additional.
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Johnson, Council President Johnson. This actual section in the ordinance that relates to an employer having paid time off or other policies is in Section 40.310, the very last section of the ordinance. Subsection B is the one that discusses- Subsection B is the one that discusses the fact that this is a minimum standard, that if an employer offers some sort of paid time off policy or other paid leave policy that meets or exceeds what the ordinance requires, then they are not required to provide additional sick and safe time. And that is the same section in which that donation policy is included, that subsection C.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. And we can answer some of these later, but I have some questions about the ordinance itself, particularly about the exclusions. I'm curious about why we've excluded the U.S. government, the State Department, and agencies, other county and local governments from falling under this. It strikes me that there's a large proportion of our city employees who work for those entities and working in the city of Minneapolis, and I'm wondering what the rationale is. And then I have a few more questions.
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, we have excluded them because we do not have authority over the federal government or the state of Minnesota or other local governments to impose these requirements.
So that would also mean we can't impose them over the park board, for example? Is that be considered a local government entity as well?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, the park board is a department of the city. It's covered by the ordinance.
And how about the University of Minnesota? Is that considered an entity of the state, or will our, do we have some jurisdiction over them?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, the University of Minnesota is not, it's an entity of the state, and we do not have any jurisdiction over them.
So then I think we're carving out two of the biggest employers in the city, the county and the University of Minnesota, which is unfortunate. I'd be curious about where it says we don't have jurisdiction over them or why we don't. It's a little confusing because I didn't hear a lot about that in the past, and I didn't hear that from our recommendations from our work group. They didn't say we needed to exclude these groups either, so.
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Gordon, I believe that the city attorney, Susan Segal, wishes to address this issue.
Madam Chair and Councilmember Gordon, Ms. Trammell apparently couldn't read my lips, but I know Ms. Trammell's very familiar with this case. There is, in fact, precedent in the state of Minnesota under a civil rights ordinance where the courts have told us that we do not have the authority to regulate state agencies. That case particularly dealt with the University of Minnesota. So it's not a question of want or could we, we just simply lack the legal authority to do so.
Thank you.
Okay. Might be interesting to test it in this other area, which is slightly different, but I can see why that recommendation wouldn't be coming forward. But I'm also curious about construction workers, and I looked up the state definition that's referred to in the ordinance, and it's quite broad about what's considered a construction worker. It means any laborer, member of a trade, who is employed in the building or construction industry and who's engaged in, but not limited to, any of the following occupations: carpenters, electricians, plumbers, bricklayers, mason, steam fitters, pipe fitters, ironworkers, sheet metal workers, cement finishers, laborers, operating engineers, lathers, plasters, painters, pipe covers, and glaziers. And I just imagine in the city, we must have a lot of people working for contractors doing that kind of work. And I'm wondering why they're excluded, and I understand that there's also a prevailing wage provision there, but why shouldn't they also be entitled to protection with paid sick time like other workers in the city?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Gordon, that is a policy decision for the council members to make, and the direction that I was given as a policy direction was to provide an exclusion for those construction workers who are paid a prevailing wage on all work performed.
Okay, well, that would be something that would be interesting to hear back from labor organizers or people from the partnership who worked on that, to see what their opinion is on that. It also seems like that would carve out quite a few workers in the city, as well as the other provision about the health care providers and the casual employees. That seems to be a pretty significant carve-out as well. I actually am familiar with nurses who work as casual employees, and clearly the definition was carved out to make sure that they're excluded. But actually, to have a casual status in a hospital, you have to work a minimum number of hours each shift or each month, so you don't really get to choose every single shift whether or not to work, because ultimately you'll get bumped off the list. And I also read that, and it looks similar to substitute teachers as well. And so, but yet substitute teachers, presumably, once you work your 80 hours, I think it is, you're going to be covered under this. So is that also just a policymaker decision, or is there some preemptive case law that says we can't include health providers and casual workers?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Gordon, it is also a policy decision, and we will draft at the direction of the council on those issues. There is no law that says we must exclude them.
Okay, thank you very much. Maybe we can talk about some of these issues later.
Thank you. Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ms. Trammell, two quick questions. One is regarding the casual employees slash health care workers. And I just want to be clear, the way that it's described in the ordinance itself necessitates that the individual be both a casual employee as defined as well as a health care worker making above whatever was four times the living wage in order to be exempt?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Fry, yes, but I want to further emphasize that they must be licensed and employed in the capacity of providing health care and earn four times the federal minimum wage in order to qualify for the exemption.
Is there a reason why we have two definitions for that and why they can't be combined? So, I mean, right now, we've got casual employee, which is one definition, and the health care worker is another. Could we not combine those two, casual employee working in the health care field?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Fry, that's a possibility, yes. It was drafted in this manner because, as, for example, Councilmember Gordon raised, there are other types of casual employees. And should the council give me direction at a later time that they want to include, say, substitute teachers that work for parochial or charter schools, because we don't have jurisdiction over the Minneapolis public school system, you know, that would accommodate, I'd be able to accommodate that type of request easier than combining this all into one. That's why it was done that way.
I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not making exemptions that we don't intend to make.
Correct.
While making the exemptions that we intend to make. Second question is, if you just go back, I believe it's two slides, to the enforcement and appellate process, I just want to go through this really quick.
What section again, Councilmember Fry?
This would be the enforcement and the appellate process. I think it's two slides back.
Oh, thank you. This slide here with the relief?
Yeah. Okay, maybe it's the next one. Well, regardless, I'll just look and walk through it verbally, too. So the first step is the submission of a complaint to the department. Is that correct, or to the individual?
Yes or no, Chair Glidden and Councilmember Fry? Once there's a report of a violation, the department may in its sole discretion begin an investigation or otherwise pursue the violation. But they need not have a report, an actual report of a violation, to pursue an investigation. If they learn through any other credible evidence that they have, gives them concern that there's a violation of this ordinance, they may begin an investigation on their own initiative.
Okay, that makes sense. So either report or knowledge of a violation triggers the investigation. The investigation then gives rise to the ability to contradict or appeal? Or does that only arise after the decision is made following investigation?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Fry, once the investigative process has concluded and the department determines that, yes, indeed, there is a violation, that triggers the appeal process.
Okay.
To a hearing officer.
Okay, so then the hearing officer then makes the determination that then gives rise to a second appeal?
A potential writ of certiorari to the Minnesota Supreme Court, yes.
Okay. Does, so we're not anticipating the appeal from the hearing officer going through any individual council committee in this? We're anticipating it then going up to the state courts?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Fry, we have not included the city council as any part of the hearing process.
Okay. And then, I didn't see a private right of action, but I believe that an individual who is submitting that there is a violation by their employer, they can go directly to the state courts, too. I just didn't, maybe I missed it in the presentation.
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Fry, no, we did not include that.
It is in the ordinance.
It is not in the ordinance. It is not included.
So there's no private right of action within the ordinance?
That's correct.
I didn't realize that. I got to have to collect my thoughts.
Okay. Councilmember Pomisano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Trammell, I'm curious, when we discussed the usage of sick and safe time, I was struck by this last bullet on Slide 8 about when there's exposure to an infectious agent, biological toxin, or hazardous material. Why not for weather? People have the same kinds of childcare needs when schools get closed because of snow emergencies or temperature. Was that a policy decision, or is there some legal aspect that prevents us from putting it in there?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Pomisano, that would also be a policy direction. We included what we did because one of our purposes and goals and our findings were related to the public health and the health of other workers in the city and the health of our visitors and the communicable diseases that get spread around by people coming to work sick.
I see. Another question I had is from your slide on Page 5, Slide 5. When you explain that employers with PTO policy meeting are exceeding the ordinance, they need not provide more paid sick or safe time, I'm curious, who makes this determination? Is this an MDCR determination, and is it looked at then annually? Or, yeah, that's my second question.
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Pomisano, this area of what is considered to be at least as generous paid sick and safe time leave or other equal leave is something that will have to be addressed extensively in the rules and guidelines so that both employers and employees know the expectations by the time that the ordinance becomes effective. And frequently asked questions will also address this in more detail.
My last question is, because I heard it a lot in a lot of the listening sessions from the work group, and I'm not sure then how it shook out in this ordinance, is how do we track work that's within city limits for the kinds of businesses that work all around a metro area? And what about, I think I know the answer to this, but just to be really clear for everybody else, what about corporations who are headquartered outside the city limits but their employees do extensive work within the city?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Pomisano, if an employer is located outside the city but their employees work in the city, including those employees who would say work from home and work remotely, they are covered by the ordinance if they perform 80 hours of work in the year for that employer. The mechanisms for tracking will be dealt, will have to be dealt with extensively, again, in the rules and the regulations and the setup of how employers can be expected to follow this.
And so then, tracking work, I mean, a basic example would be, you know, like a plumber who has however many jobs outside, you know, just outside our city limits versus inside our city, those will have to be tracked relative to one another, assuming that then the employer wishes to only provide sick time for what they're working with by ordinance versus just having a general policy.
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Pomisano, yes, if they don't otherwise provide at least the minimum of what's included in this ordinance, they would need to continue to track.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of detailed questions as well. One was about the casual worker question. Is that definition found in other laws in the states or in our cities?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Bender, yes and no. Other cities, some other cities don't exempt casual workers at all, say San Francisco and, I believe, Seattle. Other cities do, like Philadelphia, and some in New York City. And the definition that you have is a combination of all of those, taking the best from each ordinance and trying to make it work and keep it limited for the use that was set forth to me as the direction we wanted to go.
Thank you. Because my understanding of this issue from conversations that happened a while ago was there was concern that folks who call in for shifts would then call back and use sick time for shifts that they had volunteered for. And I wondered, the New York approach took one that was more about saying that that behavior was not covered instead of the employees themselves were not covered. And I wondered if you considered that approach and why you didn't go with that version of exemption.
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Bender, I'm not exactly sure that I understand your question, but I'll try to answer it here. Some of what we took and is included in this ordinance was from New York City. In New York City, they do not exempt any health care providers. They exempt certain speech pathologists and physical therapists, et cetera, who are licensed by their Department of Education and are considered an on-call casual-type situation. So we aren't addressing those, we are actually addressing some health care providers that provide health care. New York also had the four times the minimum wage because there's some concern about whether people want to be on-call workers or that's just what they can get as on-call, and the higher paid presumption, the higher you're paid, the presumption is you're more likely to want that setup than to, if you're less highly paid. It was also drafted in this way because in the health care industry, if you were just to use the phrase, those who work in the health care industry, that's broader, that would include everyone who works in the hospital cafeteria or provides janitorial services as well and works on-call. So there were various reasons as to how it ended up being drafted the way it was. I will note that none of this is really dealt with in the New York ordinance. It's dealt with in their frequently asked questions and rules, which, again, is where our Department of Civil Rights is going to have to expand and deal with the intricacies of actually implementing the casual health care provider provision.
Thank you. That's helpful. And then my other questions were more about enforcement. One was, well, one question I had was, as we look at the businesses that have under six employees, I think in the partnership recommendations, when they were looking at those micro businesses, there was still a provision that there would be protections against retaliation if workers used unpaid sick time? And I wondered if that was in this version of the ordinance, just with that different number.
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Bender, thank you for bringing that up. I neglected to say that. And yes, that the workplace partnership, a recommendation related to those who have less than the number of employees that are mentioned for full compliance must still offer unpaid time off, and the other protections would apply.
And then just one final question, which was the phase-in period. So we've allowed for a pretty significant period of time before the ordinance begins, which would be July 1 of 2017, and then another 12 months of phased-in enforcement. You know, I think in particular for our most vulnerable low-wage workers, this issue of... You know, I think in particular for our most vulnerable low-wage workers, this issue of retaliation is considerable. And so I wondered if right now, so I think the ordinance right now doesn't treat retaliation differently during that phase-in period of enforcement. So I wanted to make sure that was correct. And then I just kinda wanted to flag that as a potential issue.
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Bender, that is correct, that the department would work with the employer and the employee impacted for mediation and corrective action. And so some of the same remedies would be applicable, but they would work together and not impose fines. None of those additional $15,000 fines, or $1,500 fines would be imposed.
I put myself in queue here for a couple of questions. So, comments. First, just thank you, Ms. Trammell yourself, for, I think, good work in presenting us with a product. And I know that you're here to just kinda hear what continues to be the direction and the questions on this. I personally really appreciate that a lot of this ordinance seems to track very closely to the partnership recommendations. There are some differences, and my guess is most of our debate and discussion is going to be on those differences than on the things that track closely to the partnership report. With, I would say for myself, probably the thing I have the most questions about is about this casual employee. And is this the best and most fair way to address the casual employees? Or is there another methodology that seems more appropriate? I know when we heard from the Workplace Partnership Group, they had talked to us with a suggestion that some of the casual employee concerns could be addressed in implementation. And I just, I feel like that is what happened in the New York model. I actually have probably spent more time than I ever thought that I would, looking at a variety of models of how these different cities have addressed or not addressed the question of this unique category of employees that are sometimes called casual and sometimes something that's kinda similar to that. So personally, I feel like that implementation approach seems to be a more fair and even-handed way to deal with it. I get concerned about putting a big exemption into the ordinance, that then there will be questions about fairness of why my business isn't an exemption, and then how many, how many employees are then covered under the exemption that is in there. So I think both of those kinda sides to the equation come into play when you have the exemption right there in the ordinance, as opposed to a methodology for how you look at the implementation that then can maybe address the questions as they come up. So that would be my perspective on that, at least right now. I had, I know there were questions on the exemption on prevailing wage. And I thought prevailing wage, so maybe this is a question. I thought, under Minnesota law, that prevailing wage, which just applies, and maybe you wanna talk about how prevailing wage applies and when it applies, but for those particular employees that are paid a prevailing wage, that it anticipates that that would cover for those construction workers, things like time off, because they have such unique ways that their industry works with scheduling and working in a certain bunch of time, and then sometimes having to work seven days of the week to get their work done and other things like this. So I'm not a prevailing wage expert, but I thought that some of the rationale behind this was that, under state law, prevailing wage is anticipated to be a rate that will cover some of those items, unlike a minimum wage, which is not anticipated to cover things other than just your exact time worked.
Chair Glidden, it is, you are correct in that prevailing wage does, in the definition and calculation of a prevailing wage, it does include many benefits. It doesn't specifically include paid sick time, but it does account for paid vacation time in the statute. So my understanding of this is that actually, in the construction industry, those construction workers like what they've negotiated for prevailing wage and want it to be left as is.
Okay. And again, I feel like that's a little bit similar to us setting the minimum standard and the provision you have at the end of the ordinance that says, as long as you have something that would meet the minimum standard, such as a paid time off policy, that that could comply, which I think that is intended. So anyway, I just, I wanted to better understand what you thought the rationale was from your perspective and what else we need to learn about prevailing wage and how that does or doesn't cover this, so. All right. I have also had some questions that I've, that I've heard throughout this process about concerns regarding retaliation and, and aspect of retaliation, which might be threats by the employer or folks at the employer to report immigration status, questions or suspicions of immigration status. And I was curious if you thought this was a topic that should be addressed directly in the ordinance? Or is this something that more typically would be addressed in how civil rights would adopt some rules and regulations that would give examples of what could, what could translate into retaliatory action?
Chair Glidden, I think that that is an area best dealt with in the rules.
Okay. And then the last question I had was how mediation might be utilized as a tool. And maybe this is just a question for civil rights, when they have an opportunity to think a little bit more. We haven't really gotten to that part of the presentation, but if, I understand there's gonna be a recommendation that civil rights would be the enforcement agency. And so maybe that's a question for them when they've had time to think about this as to, it looks like Brian is ready to go, how they think mediation might play into the administration and enforcement.
Thank you very much for the question, Chair Glidden. I think it's an excellent one.
You, maybe would you like to introduce yourself to us?
Of course. My name is Brian Walsh. I am the senior investigator in the Civil Rights Department. Chair Glidden, thank you very much for the question. I think that this particular enforcement process offers a great deal of opportunity for alternative dispute resolution and mediation. And the goal, at least at this point, really would be to utilize mediation either formally or informally or any other kind of ADR. And we, and we do that very successfully already in the Civil Rights Department and other types of enforcement actions and investigations. I think that these investigations, because the facts that we're, that we're looking to find are so specific and narrow, you either did or did not provide paid sick leave, that that can lead very quickly to everyone sort of getting on the same page about what it is that actually happened and why, and then perhaps reaching a mutually agreeable resolution or solution for the issue.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing other councilmembers, Councilmember Frye is another question.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So a couple of questions. If you go to 40.120, which is the appeals section, Ms. Trammell, and this is subsection D. This is in the instance when a final decision has been made by a hearing officer, and now there's the opportunity to appeal under Minnesota Stat 606.01. It says, "The department shall notify the employer of this right of review after issuance of the hearing officer's final decision." What if the hearing officer's decision is the opposite? In other words, they rule against the employee. Does the employee then have a right of appeal up to the state courts?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Frye, no.
Why would we give one person the right of appeal and not the other? I guess, okay, I don't, policy question.
I don't know if she had a response.
Maybe you had a response. I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna be asking you something that was up to us to determine, but go ahead.
Well, it is Chair Glidden and Councilmember Frye ultimately a policy decision. But we have said that the pursuit of a violation is within the sole discretion of the department. So, department is going to be bringing those cases only that they actually feel that are very provable to start with. So I'm not anticipating many, if any, decisions that the department would proceed with that wouldn't be sustained ultimately. If we look at some of the other cities, the vast, about half of the complaints relate to, I earned the sick leave and I didn't, I didn't, earned or accrue the sick leave and I didn't get it credited to me. So, you know, there's, it's a factual type determination based on records and hours worked and those kinds of calculations. And the department's going to pursue those that are, that, yeah, that's the case or not the case. So there's some protection upfront to investigate those things and determine if there's enough to go forward.
Right. But if it's a factual determination, and I don't wanna get into an argument here, but if it's, if it's a factual determination adverse to the employer, certainly it would also be a factual determination if it was adverse to the employee, thus necessitating a right of appeal for both.
Again, Chair Glidden and Councilmember Frye, those are policy considerations that can be addressed.
And then, you know, my, and this is less of a question and more of just a stated concern. If the sole discretion is to whether to appeal, or the sole discretion is to whether to bring enforcement up to the state courts is left up to the departments, then inevitably what you're gonna get is a bunch of policymakers lobbying our departments, insisting that they appeal or don't appeal a particular decision. Whereas if the individual had a private right of action to begin with, they wouldn't, it empowers the individual. They wouldn't be reliant on us to come forward with a rather political determination. It could be left to a legal determination, which, that's not, you can answer if you want, but it's letting, really more of a point and less of a question. Not to mention, well, sorry, Madam Vice President. You know, I don't know what the number of complaints and violations that are submitted to other jurisdictions are like. But what we, the situation that we don't wanna get into is a very large number of complaints being submitted. Our staff's inability to enforce those determinations, but then have no private right of action for an individual to have their grievance met, which basically means you have to bolster either staff, or, plus, I mean, even if you do bolster staff, you're, you're gonna wanna have some ability to go to the, to the courts individually.
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Frye, we did not include a private cause of action because we don't believe that we can legally support the inclusion of that in there. It would, it would not be defensible. And perhaps we can discuss this further.
Okay.
Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Councilmember Frye is raising an important point, but I just wondered if you could explain what a private right of action is? Maybe it's obvious, but just so everyone's on the same page, who's listening to our discussion, so we're kinda starting with from the same information.
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Bender, if the, an ordinance provided for a private cause of action, we'd be saying to an employee, if you think there's been a violation of this ordinance, you can bring a case in district court or other court of competent jurisdiction. And I'm saying there are legal problems with including that.
Okay. I am not seeing anyone else in our queue right here, so thank you very much, Ms. Trammell. Ms. Rivera Vandermine?
Thank you again. So we'll direct us to the next part of the staff direction, which is developing a recommendation for who should administer this policy. And as again, I assume that most of that would come in the first part of the presentation. Some of these slides I'll go over very quickly, but wanted to at least share our thoughts for how we came to that recommendation. We shared generally the Workplace Partnership Group recommendations regarding enforcement. And talk a little bit about civil rights, and I do wanna note that we started last fall thinking about departments for whom the administration of this policy would be appropriate. We looked at four different departments throughout the city. We eventually narrowed those to the Department of Civil Rights and to the Business Licensing Division and CPED. And I should say that both were open and eager and ready to step up to the task. Ultimately, we thought that where, and you'll see some information about civil rights and some of the work that they do, but where they already enforce and have policies and procedures in place that are so closely aligned to this work, that that seemed to be the better fit as this work progressed forward. And that is why our recommendation moves forward with that. There are on this slide, some additional, provided by Mr. Walsh, some additional information about their mediation program and how they use that forward, along with some, some information and some documentation that just came out of Civil Rights' most recent results conference. As we think about how this policy should be implemented, we also, again, going to Ms. Trammell's point, we concurred broadly with the Workplace Partnership's recommendation and what we heard from both residents and businesses alike, that there's a lot of outreach that needs to be done, that we really wanted to involve a lot of community engagement at all levels and with a variety of techniques and tactics. I note that in our conversations, and I will tip my hat off to IGR, who's not here. IGR staff reached out to the, actually to all 22 jurisdictions who have enacted this, some of which provided some more information than others. But in their conversations with the other jurisdictions that had enacted similar policies, the bits of advice that we got that for them were the most helpful were in fact, a really, really broad outreach program with sufficient time in which to develop rules and guides and those frequently asked questions that Ms. Trammell was alluding to. We have copies and templates of other jurisdictions that have done that, that we're happy to share and forward. And I think they provide illuminating detail because they go to scenario examples and they really help explain particularly to businesses, but to also residents and employees alike, what the, what the case is. If this happened, or if I worked X hours, how would this apply? If, to Councilmember Palmasano's point, I am somebody who's just driving by or providing this kind of services, how would that be counted? So again, we'd be very happy to provide you with those. But it concurs with that recommendation from best practices of those jurisdictions, that is ultimately the best way to move a policy like this forward. I also note, and I don't recall if Ms. Trammell also made the nuance, that in that first year of phased implementation, that while we want to be more remedial and corrective in nature, that that does not necessarily apply to those folks that are continuously violating that good faith. That there will be people throughout that period, perhaps, that continue to, despite the corrective action, despite the notification, despite the fact that civil rights has been working with them to correct their violations, decide that in that year, they're going to be continuously violating this policy. And there are some exceptions to those, so that that remedial nature of the approach really responds to new violations. We also recommend, and it is something that we will come back for on Council the whole on May 25th, with the creation of the advisory body to assist in reviewing the impact and the outcomes of this policy. And we will be prepared to discuss that when we come back on May 25th. Again, as we mentioned before, one of the key things that I just wanted to highlight as well, that one of the other reasons that we suggested and recommended a 12-month start period for the effective date of this ordinance was a really candid conversation that we had with the Department of Civil Rights, where they had just recently implemented some changes to the Office of Police Conduct Review. They did that in nine months and frankly, said they so wish that they had been a little bit more thoughtful, that they had just had a little more additional time to make that a smoother transition. So we wanted to honor that experience within our city. Well, we were, we asked the Department of Civil Rights to provide us, and we also spoke with Communications and NCR to provide us generally with what a communications plan might look like as we identify it. And so in broad strokes, we've, want to start the work of identifying this summer and in fall the key messages, to work on those frequently asked questions, to work on those rules and regulations. And then really spend the rest of the fall, winter, spring, seeking input from community on what some of those frequently asked questions and rules and guidelines mean, and also figuring out how to best explore and pursue different avenues. We want to make sure that our employers and our business community really are cognizant of what this is. Our intent is not to have gotcha moments within our communities. of what this is. Our intent is not to have gotcha moments within our communities, but really to make sure everybody understands the breadth and the scope of this rule. We also want to make sure that our employees are cognizant of what rights they have as they go into the workplace with a new policy such as this, and who that singular point of contact will be if they feel that they need something addressed.
Just a moment. Councilmember Kano has a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nuria, you can feel free to answer this now or at the end of your presentation. So, first of all, I'm glad to hear about the communications plan. I was shopping on Lake Street yesterday and chatting with some of the Spanish-speaking, Latino business owners, and they weren't aware that this was happening today. And I made a call to David Rubador yesterday or the day before, just asking us to prepare a multilingual engagement plan for the public hearing. That will be hopefully coming up soon. I'm hoping you can tell us a little bit more about that date. I understand it might have shifted. We were maybe thinking it was going to happen in June, and now it might happen sometime in May. So, making sure we have a multilingual engagement plan to promote the, the public hearing that will happen around this paid sick policy, and ensuring that our Spanish-speaking business owners are aware of this, as well as our Somali-speaking business owners and other diverse communities. But my question was more, as, as you were talking about this 12-month preparation timeline, I'm just curious, did the partnership or the staff discuss the bandwidth of this particular structure to potentially take on other issues like a minimum wage raise, if we do move forward with that, if we take up the issue of fair scheduling and wage theft? Has there been any conversations about how this particular structure could or could not take on more initiatives if the council were to move forward on raising the wage and move forward on doing more workers' rights initiatives?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Kano, to respond quickly to the last question, I can say that we have not discussed additional policy considerations in here as yet. We have really been focused on the policy direction at hand. I will add to that that, and perhaps this goes to the first part of your question in terms of the communications plan, that what we found, not only in pursuing a communication strategy and a listening session and strategy with the Workplace Partnership Group, really honing in on different stakeholders, that the lessons learned from those 14 listening sessions, really, I think, are driving, and because we had such great staff involvement with NCR and Communications, they're really driving us as a city to think about communications on a multitude of initiatives, not just this one, in different ways. In this year's budget, the City Coordinator's Office received monies to think about an enterprise communication strategy. And this kind of thing plays into that as we look to write, fit, communication styles and need, whether it's different formats, videos, or social media, or the regular printed flyers, or whether it's about doing so in different languages to reach the broadest amount of community possible. And so, I believe that this kind of strategy will be something that you'll see more and more involved in for a variety of purposes as we implement, and we have big projects like this moving forward in a variety of formats. We certainly expect to be announcing when we have a date, and I do not myself know the date of a public hearing, and perhaps that will come at the end of this, of this presentation, but we certainly would anticipate sending out a broad communications plan to ensure the broadest participation available.
I don't see other questions. Thank you.
Terrific. Going to the last staff direction, which is really about mitigating some of the concerns that we heard from a variety of stakeholders, but in particular, we certainly did hear some from the business community on how a policy like this would impact. And I, again, want to applaud the thoroughness of the draft ordinance, because I believe that we can see that many of the issues that we saw are addressed in the draft ordinance, ensuring retaliation is prohibited, ensuring provisions for notice, provisions about PTO policies, et cetera. We had other recommendations that go beyond the scope of the city's ordinance, and particularly involved work or suggestions involving our legislative agenda. I will note that we have passed those on to IGR, and they have passed that on to their Legislative Agenda Development Policy Liaison Team to see how those policy objectives could fit into the legislative agenda, or how they fit into some of the other things that we have currently running. Focusing on particularly the impact that this would have on new and existing business employers, certainly concerns over possible administrative burdens, concerns about the effects on the local economy and growth. And I just really want to highlight here that, just as we heard many comments from employees and heard some heartfelt stories about employees, about what it means not to have access to sick time, and what it meant for them to not be able to take time off for their children's illnesses and so forth. I, I just want to highlight that the concerns that was brought forth by the business community in general were no less genuine or real. They were also very heartfelt about what this would do in terms of what they need to track, what they need to do with their existing policies, how does this impact Minneapolis, concerns and suggestions on why this isn't taken up at a state or a national level. I will only have to say that staff looked to research and looked to other jurisdictions to get some advice. We certainly are not the only city that has moved forward, or is moving forward, on this type of policy. And so, as we did our best practices research and contacted other jurisdictions, what we can say right now is that while some of those concerns, and again, I want to recognize the validity and the genuineness of those concerns, that they have not played out as a reality in most of the jurisdictions that we have found. I note to a publication of the U.S. Department of Health, and citing some studies that they found, and additionally provided some reports, statements from the most recent reports, and in particular, New York just came out with one last summer, that they found New York's economy has thrived and so forth. And so, we want to be attentive. I, I don't want to dismiss it, and we want to make sure that we are attentive to those needs. And one of the reasons, one of the ways in which we're going to address those concerns is by developing an evaluation mechanism. And I think that's something that has not been part of other cities as we looked at this. Not every city, and it's why we have so little documentation about perhaps the impact of policies like this in other jurisdictions, is not a lot of people, some of these policies, A, are new, are newer, and some of just jurisdictions haven't spent the time or the money to evaluate, to go back and see what the impact on their economy is, or if it made an impact in health. And so, we want to be very conscious and deliberate about creating a mechanism in which we look at the policy and find if we do have unintended consequences, find if there are things that we need to fix, or to tweak, or to address in subsequent years. There's a provision in the draft ordinance requiring an annual evaluation. We also want to think about, and will be including that in the May 25th presentation as we talk about perhaps a more permanent structure, an advisory board that speaks to workplace issues. And we wanted to incorporate some of the partnership, the really valuable partnership approaches that were presented forward by our Workplace Partnership member, Steve Kramer. I think workplace recognition, and best practices, and peer-to-peer counseling and so forth, there are really valuable and rich suggestions, and I would hope that this body would continue to take those into account. We did have the Department of Health decided to, there was a pre-application funding opportunity, and so, waiting to hear a bid about whether or not we would be invited to submit a bid for a two-year grant that would at least help us evaluate the health impacts of such a policy. And so, we will let you know if that moves forward. If such, that would be, we would be invited to submit an application by June 8th. I also want to highlight here the work of folks around the city, and what we heard really clearly from a lot of business owners and small businesses in particular, was that there was just consternation about their feeling supported by the city in terms of the work that they do. And I want to acknowledge that. I want to say, beyond or perhaps outside the scope of the work that the Workplace Partnership were doing, staff was doing some really, and continues to do, some really great work in this arena. And I wanted to highlight some of the work that's coming out of the current, either Business Made Simple or ELMs. For those that aren't familiar with ELMs, it is the Enterprise Land Management System. It is what will replace how we track and how we automate our inspections process, how we grant licenses, how we do permits. And so, the fact that we are now currently using an unsupported and outdated product, and we will, by October of this year, we hope be launching and going live with a new ELMs product. And that is one way that we're actually taking the opportunity to streamline and to rethink our current processes. And if we can try to do that now, in advance of that, then hopefully we will also be making that easier for folks as that moves forward. We have a small group that's been constituted under the Business Made Simple report that was issued, that really talked about developing strategies for the counter experience. And we're really trying to keep that customer experience in mind as we think about, how does it feel when somebody comes to the counter? And how does it feel differently depending on whether somebody's used to coming to the city, whether somebody speaks a different language, whether somebody has just moved here and looking to start a business for the first time, and trying to make sure that we know what that, what that looks like and feels for customers. An additional recommendation that comes out of the Business Made Simple report was the use of perhaps a navigator, where we have a point of contact where somebody could come in and say, "I don't need to repeat my story to three, or four, or five, or six other people. I just need some answers to my questions, and I know it goes across departments. Can I speak to somebody who knows what I need and can get back to me?" And so, some of those additional considerations are going on right now. We have a consultant who is known to the city and has, and really knows our process really well, who's creating and simplifying checklists in a much more visible manner, but also more simplified manner, that really speak to, how do you start a business, how do you manage a business, how do you grow a business? At the end of the day, that's really what we want. And so, we've got some ongoing work that's, that's moving, and some really strategies that are aimed at that. We're also currently involved in mapping all those touch points where businesses come into play across departments, to really assess where that's landing, and if there are ways to reevaluate our current resources now and configure them in a different way that would make ease of making, doing business with the city, something that's much more supported for staff. I wanted to also highlight, as we think about our business community, that the current supplier diversity efforts as well are delving into some of that, and that's outside, again, of the scope of the paid time off policies, but increasing certification options for small and minority and women-owned businesses so that people can have more of the piece of the procurement pie, if you will, from a city perspective. Creating a race and gender neutral program that I know Council Vice President Glidden and Councilmember Quincy are very supportive of, to figure out how do we continue to support small businesses as we move forward, and expanding the BTAP program, the Business Technical Assistance Program, that is already happening in this year, and thinking creatively about ways in which to continue to leverage that as we move forward. So, we hope that in some of these actions that are ongoing, and some that hopefully the, at a board such as the Advisory Board and conversations, continued conversations with yourselves, that we will continue to address those concerns that were brought forth by the business community. And with that, I at least finished that end of the presentation and can also stand for questions.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm not seeing questions right now. There may be a couple as I say that. So, and I'll maybe, just as folks are preparing themselves with some questions, is that we are going to be finalizing today a schedule for both the public hearings, where we will take public comment, and a, then a separate special meeting of the Committee of the Whole, where we will move this draft ordinance and consider amendments to it and, and vote on it. And so, we will, we are trying to work on what has ended up being a few little just scheduling challenges. So, that's why I'm saying I, I wish I would tell you the dates right now, but we will today make an announcement and use our communications department to help us publicize that far and wide. So, with that, Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say a big thanks to staff for their work on this, to my colleagues, to the folks on the partnership, to the advocates, to all the residents and the small business owners that have been a part of this process. It's just wonderful to see us get to this point. We have such a balanced policy in front of us, and that we have the pieces in place to really make this successful. And I'm very excited about it. I look forward to the public hearing, and I'll have more comments at that time. But I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone involved so far into this point. Thank you.
Well, I'm not seeing, oh, Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me just echoing that. I think it's, the level of detail of the questions that we were asking today, I think, indicates the high level of consensus that we have on the big directions of this policy, and that's really a testament to the work of the 15 volunteer members of the partnership group, all the community folks who got involved in the businesses who attended the meetings, all of the staff time that went into this. So, I think we're in a really great position here to get these final details worked out and get over the finish line of this year-long process to develop our paid sick time ordinance. And I think this piece that you have highlighted at the end here about, particularly our small businesses, but our whole business community in Minneapolis, you know, we've had the chance to really have a lot of contact over this past year, and I just wanted to voice my own support for the work that I know is already happening and potentially going beyond into some of the recommendations that we're hearing from the Twin Cities Metro Independent Business Association, from our own individual businesses, from the Main Street Alliance, just really picking up that torch and moving forward to make sure that we are supporting the job creators in our city and the businesses that really are keeping our economy growing. So, I think it's a really exciting place that we're at here with the draft. And I guess I should just quickly say thank you to Council President and Council Vice President for all the work that you did together to get us to this great point here.
Councilmember Gordon?
I also appreciate the, the work. I'm really glad that we have one ordinance that we're looking at today. And I know there were some, some things that got worked out along the way to get us to this point. I think it'll be really important in the weeks ahead before the public hearing and at the public hearing that we hear back from our, our people who served on the partnership, also the general community, so we can understand what they're thinking about the, the draft now that it's out here. I don't think this is the appropriate place for us to start trying to amend things, but I anticipate that that place would be at the meeting where the public hearing is. I'll be doing a little bit of work based on the questions that I definitely flagged for everybody here about the issues that I have, about who's excluded and is that the right, do we really have the right mix yet? And I'm, I'm concerned that we are leaving out some workers that should be included in this, and that's kind of the focus that I'll be working on. And so, I'll anticipate a great public hearing. And my understanding is it'll probably be in the next four weeks that we'll be expected to be done with this and pass something. Is that correct?
So, thank you, Councilmember Gordon. So, yes, we are hopeful, and again, I just, we have some last details in terms of making sure that we're really confident. Again, this is a really important ordinance to every single member of the city council here, and so, we have a great desire from all the council members to be able to participate in all the remaining processes so that they're fully engaged in this process. And we want to do our best to make sure all our council members can, can do that. We are hopeful that we might be able to have a schedule where we would be able to vote at our full council meeting, May 27th, but we need to double-check that that is the case. And again, we will be releasing a schedule for a public hearing, and then a separate special meeting of the Committee of the Whole, and that's probably the meeting where we would talk about amendments and those other types of things, and have that debate about what should be the final version of the ordinance. So, I am not seeing any other comments. I want to, again, thank everyone who has been part of this process to date, and thank also our staff for, I think, doing a great job in presenting us with the product that is the result of the Workplace Partnership recommendations and some additional materials. And with that, let's receive and file the reports before us. On approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you, Nuria.
Thank you.
Thank you.